All right, seven.
All right. Welcome to the Stowe Select Board meeting of March 8th, 2022. Twenty twenty-two, yeah, I said that right. We have tonight, Courtney Frescher, our, one of our members is not here this evening on vacation this week, but otherwise we have Jim Salvi, Zach Burns, and Megan Birch-Michael. Just a reminder, we are recording both on Zoom as well as on, or will be on Zoom as well as on Stowe TV.
Recording in progress.
There you go. So, but we need to let you know that in advance. If you speak during public comments, please make sure you say your name and your address. And if we have unanimous votes, I won't be asking for a roll call. Otherwise, I will ask each member for their vote. With that, I will open to public input. I don't see anyone. So we will move on to board member comments. So today, people might know, is International Women's Day. So here's a plug for our local recently published book, Celebrating Stowe's Women from the twentieth, nineteen twenty, the, the Women's Right to Vote. And also a huge plug, so this is Marilyn Zavorowski's book. It's available at the library as well as for sale, it's Council on Aging. But also a huge shout out to Stowe TV, to Jonathan Daisy, who just put together an amazing 20-minute short video about the book and about some of the characters, individuals who lived in Stowe that I highly recommend. It's on YouTube, it's easy to find, you don't have to be on Facebook, so. And that, the only things I have, and would you like to read a statement?
I would love to read a statement. "The town of Stowe condemns Russia's invasion of Ukraine and expresses our solidarity with the people of Ukraine. We are keeping you in our hearts and prayers as you fight for your lives against the unlawful and horrific invasion being perpetrated by the Russian government. The courage and determination being shown inspire our greatest admiration. To our Ukrainian friends and neighbors in Stowe and beyond, please know we stand with you and your loved ones here in Stowe, throughout America and in Ukraine. The town is working on ways that we can provide help to the citizens of Ukraine. In the meantime, if you would like to make a donation, we will be posting a list of organizations collecting funds to support the people of Ukraine on our town website." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements from board members? Okay. And I don't believe we have any recognitions tonight. So we will move to appointments. Right, don't we had, I thought we had an appointment, didn't we? We don't have an appointment, I think we do. I was thinking, sorry. Obviously, it looks like, there's no name. Okay, so let's move to Denise's Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you. Our COVID cases in town continue to decline. As of this week, we are down to 18 cases, or 3.85%, so that's great news. We still have at-home COVID test kits available to our residents while supplies last. They can be picked up at the Randall Library Circulation Desk during their regular operating hours. For information on their hours or the tests, you can visit our website. Just an update to the board on the Capital Opera projects that you approved. So you are aware, we have already placed orders for the non-public safety defibrillators, the police tasers, the highway asphalt hut box, and the new phone system for all the buildings. So all of those are in process. The non-public safety defibrillators could take up to six months to get in. We are going to place the order for the public ones, hopefully this week, I'm sorry, the public safety ones. The fire chief has a meeting regarding the grant that he applied for, and we may just purchase them and wait, and if we get the grant, we'll pay with that. If we don't, we'll use the ARPo funds, so we may be placing that as well. The tasers, we're not sure how much turnaround time is needed, but hopefully those will be in soon. The asphalt hut box was about a 90-day turnaround time. And the new phone system, we are looking to target early May to have that implemented. So those ones are already in the works, and the remaining projects are getting underway shortly for that.
Any changes on that, because I think you said most of these prices were estimates, or are those?
So the only one that's up a little bit is going to be the tasers. And actually, the chief ordered less to stay within the budget, and I told him to order the two additional ones, and I would cover the additional cost, because it was important that we had a taser for each officer. The defibrillators came in under the estimate, the hut box came in under the estimate, and the phone system is under the estimate.
Great.
So hopefully, the rest of the projects will fare the same way. At our next meeting, will be the first batch of project submissions for the remaining ARPo funds. We have some great projects that have been submitted, and I expect that we will have a good dialogue regarding those. It amounts to, I think it was less than $200,000 for maybe six projects, so that will be great. Also, to update the board, at our meeting on February 8th, you authorized deficit spending of the snow and ice account. At that time, we did not need to deficit spend. As of today, however, we have overspent by $36,000 and change. And as you may have heard, light snow is expected again tomorrow. So hopefully, this will be the end of it. We should not need to buy any additional materials unless we have much more snow that's coming down the line. But we did get our last salt order, and hopefully that will be enough to cover. We're hoping that tomorrow, where it's expected in the afternoon, Steve has been checking the asphalt temperatures, and if it stays warm enough, it shouldn't freeze too quickly, and it should allow for some light snow removal operations. So we'll see how that goes. Just a reminder, the town meeting warrant articles are due by Friday, April 1st. Nomination papers are still available through the town clerk's office for the May 21st annual election. The deadline to take out papers is March 30th, and the deadline to return completed papers is April 1st at 5:00 PM. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. So first item is the Randall Library Friends Used Book Sale, April 22nd to 24th, which I'm excited to see. And Carol, I guess that you are on, are you here to talk, to tell us more about it?
Oh, hang on, Carol, you're on mute.
There she is.
Yeah, there we go. Yes, we are collecting books like crazy. And we are looking forward to having a successful sale, for sure. And the proceeds from the sale will go to the Randall Library Friends to support programs and to support the renovation if it gets passed a town meeting.
Great. I'm very excited. I, I've always wanted you to do this, because I think it's a great way to both raise money for the library, but also then I can get more books. Even though I love going to Silver Unicorn, but.
Tell your friends, tell your enemies, tell everybody to come and buy some books.
That's awesome.
That weekend.
So, so we, we do have the formal application that we need to review and approve tonight, based on your, you submitted all the information. We heard from, that basically, public safety is all good with it, or Council on Aging is fine with it. It's at Pompositikit, right, it's at the parking lot? Or, no, sorry, not in the parking lot, we get to go indoors now, right, inside.
Yeah, it's in the function room.
In the function room, great. Was there any, anybody questions?
No.
Excited?
That's exciting.
I hope I walk away with fewer books than I donate.
Than you donate, yeah. That's right. We need people to donate, but we also want them to come buy them, right?
The rule, you only, you get to, you get to buy as much as you donate, that's the rule.
No, well, they use the parking lot.
Can you remind us, when you're accepting books, still, there's, there's two times during the week, right?
We, we're accepting books until cutoff date is March 31st.
March 31st.
And then you can drop those off at the, in the vestibule at the library or at, there's a bin at the, at Pompo Community Center.
And Carol, can I ask you a question?
If you have big ones, you just have to get in touch with me, because I have to arrange delivery.
I saw on Facebook tonight that the Randall Library posted they need volunteers to help sort the books. So is there a specific number of volunteers, or anyone that's available can come and help you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for that and for the day of sale and prep for the sale. So we're just looking for volunteers, and people will just let me know what they're interested in doing. I have a list of people who want to do one thing or another, but yes. And you can get in touch with me via email, CJ Stoltz, S-T-O-L-T-Z, at Comcast.net.
Is there any restriction on when to drop off books, donated books? I think at one point, you were asking for two specific times during the week, and you pretty much take them anytime?
To the library, yes, anytime, and to the bin at Pompo, anytime they're open. But as I said, if you have a large donation, you should get in touch with me, because I have to arrange for you to come in the back door at Pompo.
Okay, great. If there's no other questions, all right, well, I will take a motion.
I move to approve a permit for the Randall Library Friends Used Book Sale to be held at the Pom, I can never say this word, Pompositikit Community Center from Friday, April 22nd through Sunday, April 24th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you, Carol, and good luck. Yay. Okay. Our next is to discuss the Hartley Road widening project request. And I believe, Ms. Maroni, you are here representing the district?
Yes, I am.
Great. So I, I asked to have the district here to talk about it as I was, oh, and Mike Solis, our chief, is here also as chair of the Traffic Safety Committee, as well as been involved in this since last year, right? So I was chair of the school building project when center was renovated and expanded. And we put a lot of time and effort into designing particularly the parking lots. So I've, I've been pretty surprised at this change with the district to, to flip basically how, how it's used. I mean, we designed it specifically because preceding the renovation, we had a lot of trouble on 117, both with parents dropping, you know, parking, waiting to get in, but also with buses trying to turn in, because there wasn't enough space for them. I guess there was enough space once they got in, but it backed up the traffic. So, so I guess I'd love to hear why the district decided to flip this. Because that's my concern, is why would we widen Hartley Road when it's not being used in the way it was designed?
Well, we've, we're in a situation right now where we have a backup of traffic coming from the Hale Middle School, picking, when parents come in to pick up their students. So in doing so, the road, it blocks off an entire lane of, of the, you know, of the road. I, I have a couple of pictures, if you would allow me to share my screen. I can show you a couple of pictures that our facilities direct today. Unfortunately, he is unable to be here tonight, but he will be at the Capitol Planning Meeting on Thursday. So if you could give me permission to share.
Could you just, could you first answer just the question, why, why was the flip? Why, why are you using what was, was designed as the bus drop-off area as a parent drop-off?
Historically, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what the change was. I don't, I wasn't in the position that I am right now when that decision was made. So I, I really don't know what the history of, of that is to tell you.
Can I, or do you want to do the sharing?
If somebody else has some information on that, I'm.
I think that she.
Well, I, I can see a little to that.
Yeah.
So what happened was, we were finding that during pickup and drop-off, based on the times and the allowed cars onto the property during those times, the car, kids aren't allowed to get out of the cars until the staff is out there. And then also the, during pickup, the cars would be idling. This is what the original plan of going off of the Great Road. So cars would be backed up from the entrance on Great Road all the way to Crescent Street entrance, causing significant traffic hazard from pulling out on Crescent Street and traveling on 117. Cars would be stopped and parked along the sidewalk from the entrance all the way down to, again, Crescent Street. And then what would happen is, because of the slow exit points on Great Road, that traffic would, would very rarely move to get cars out of the parking lot in a, in a timely manner. So it was switched to have the buses there, and then to pull the cars off of 117 and put them up on Hartley. So what's going on now is that where the buses used to drop off and pick up is that's where parents pick up and drop off. And, and then they loop up to make the entrance, instead of taking a left off Hartley to go into Center School, they go up and turn around up at Hale, and then come back down to Stage, going up Hartley Road. So what this would do is open up a lane, basically a staging lane. But the, also, the other advantage is, when we start going back to having town meeting and other big events up at the Hale School, currently, the side that is, has no parking is where we're going to be opening up for parking, so people will be able to leave those venues instead of, in a direct manner, out onto Crescent and Library Hill Road, where right now, they would have to go up around Hale School to come back down. But the, to answer your question, originally, the reason why the switch was is because it was becoming dangerous, having all those cars stacked up on the 117. So we wanted to pull those off and keep that traffic flowing. And did have to have people passing vehicles that were unnecessarily just parked on Crescent Street entrance.
So I guess I'm confused, because the, the design of the, of the school, it fit 50 cars in the parking lot, and then a close to 45 anyway, in the loop. So I'm, with a population of 550 students, that's 20% of the students having a parent picking them up. And were they not using the full loop? Is that?
So you could only use, you could only use up until the fire access road on the left side of Center School. That's, that's as far as you could, you could park the car, and it's, it's live parking. It's not park in and go, and most parents do the park, the live parking. They don't park their vehicles, get out and get their students. The students are actually brought out to the vehicles themselves.
Right.
So it's, it's a live drop-off and pickup.
So they aren't using the parking lot at all for that?
So there are some parents for the, for the very younger kids that are using the, the parking lot. But most of the parents are actually using the live pickup and drop-off.
Okay. I, I just don't, I, I guess the numbers don't make sense to me in terms of why there'd be that many still left on, unless we're just not using the buses anymore, and everyone's driving their kids, but.
So, okay.
Sorry, we have a.
I'm a parent.
Yeah.
Sorry. I've got a kid at Center School.
Yeah.
I have a couple of things. My biggest concern, Mike, and maybe you can speak to this, is when you're talking about the cars backing up on Crescent Street, was this prior to COVID? People are not using, I mean, now they are, but I can tell you that.
Right.
They were, parents were not putting their kids on the bus because of COVID. That is why a huge part of the backup was happening. So my whole question was why? It's, what seemed to me at town meeting was the widening of the road was in response to the flipping of the front and the back lot, which had, I'm, I was trying to find the email that I had gotten from Ross as a parent, because the way that it was conveyed to us was that it was a COVID-related swap, that we were, it was, it was in response to the amount of parents that were dropping off because their kids were not taking the bus. So I, while I recognize, and having sat in that drop-off line, I, I completely understand what's happening. I just, my only concern is spending money on a problem that seems to have been exacerbated by the pandemic, and in theory, should go back to normal. So I just, if, if you can speak to that, that would be great.
So this was brought up prior to COVID.
Okay.
This was an issue that was done prior to COVID. So this was bitten in talks for a while, we've been noticing it on the police end prior to COVID. And you can definitely, we could see, we, we used, you know, when we still do school zone enforcement, and when we would be out trying to enforce it, we could see the cars backing up from the entrance all the way to Crescent Street, on Crescent Street from the entrance. So that was, this has been in, in a discussion prior, prior to COVID.
Okay.
Definitely during COVID, we did, we did see an increase in traffic, parent traffic, I guess, you know, parent drop-off.
Right, right.
I don't know what it looks like now. I don't know if, you know, with, if that has changed in the past month or so. But to the point where, I know that we did get a complaint last week that, that parents weren't, were taking the left, they weren't going, they weren't utilizing the, the full access of Hartley Road. And that caused a backup onto Crescent to Library Hill. So hopefully, what this would do is alleviate that, and we can, and, and it's just a, a way to make, to make that area safer, and make more available parking for the rest of the area up there. Also, what happens is, when those cars are parked on Hartley, then if you have a school, if you have other school personnel going up and back and forth during that same period of time, then they get in that, in that traffic loop up there. So this would widen it.
Mr. Salvi, you had a question?
Oh, I, I just wanted to reinforce what the chief just said. It was definitely a situation that was a problem pre-COVID, because I remember going and checking out, when we were thinking about using the old fire station on Crescent Street for the shuttle to the train station. I remember going there pre-COVID, definitely pre-COVID, to check out what the situation was between 7:30 and 8 o'clock. And gridlock, my memory is gridlocked down Crescent toward Great Road and down Library Hill.
And there, I mean, that was another thing that came up when we were designing the school, was, was that intersection, particularly with parent, like with, it was only going to be buses, not parents, and so it wouldn't put the pressure on that intersection as much, because there, I mean, it's, it's hard enough with the buses, but, and, and I'm not talking about the 117 intersection, I'm talking about the one, what, what do we call that? Crescent Street and Library Hill.
Right.
Or whatever, and, and Hartley. So I'm, I'm just, I mean, I, I actually haven't been able to get down there at the right time to see how it's going, but I am concerned that we have that many parents driving, that this is a problem either, either entrance. So I also heard from a butters on, on, particularly, I guess, on Crescent Street, worried about if Hartley gets wider, people drive faster, and it gets more dangerous, not less dangerous. But that's not about, it's more about pedestrians, because there are kids who walk up and down, you know, they walk to school, particularly to Hale. And, and if the, if people are driving faster, is that putting them at risk, but.
So, so, I mean, we're, we're not thinking of widening Crescent or that, and.
No.
And Hartley has a, has a good sidewalk that has the, the berm that goes all the way up where all the kids walk, and then, and I, and I know that for future projects, you know, the Crescent Street sidewalk is being looked at in itself. So, you know, I'd like to see that as improvement, too. So.
Okay. Yeah, sure, Mr. Burns.
Ms. Maroni was going to show us.
Yes, I was just going to ask you.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, Pat, if you could do.
You should be able to show your screen.
Can everybody see that all right?
Yes, thank you.
This is what the backup, whoop, this is what the backup looks like.
Which street is that?
That's 117.
That's 117.
That's what it looked like on, on 117, correct? Is that what you're showing?
I believe so.
Wow.
Going up Hartley Road?
No, that's just, that's the old one, that's when they were still going into the front of the school?
Oh, yeah, I believe that.
Because that's the school, sort of through the trees there, I think. Okay.
And this is the area where the parent pickup line, I, I can't make this any bigger. This is from Google.
Yep.
Maps, that we, our Google satellite that we took this image. So that, that's basically where the backup builds up right now.
Sorry, is the top part?
And I have one, one more slide, too. And Rob put this slide together for me. So basically, he said that it would add approximately 500 feet to the staging lane for parent drop-off and pickup. And currently, because enter Center School loop off of Hartley Road, and traffic backs up on Hartley Road, blocking one kind of lane. And the staging lane will alleviate the traffic congestion and allow for two-way free-flowing traffic. Again, we're going to bring this before Capitol. On the same, he can probably give a more detailed explanation about what the actual construction part of that project will be.
And so, so the parking lot off of Hartley now is used not for staff anymore, I take it? Who, who's using, are staff parking in the front lot now?
Yes. The staff is parking in this parking lot.
And, and, and the front parking lot, too.
Okay.
They park in both.
So if parents are picking up, the parents who want to walk in to pick up their kids or to drop off their kids, do they, do they go in the front still, then?
Yes, yes, they do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they do, through the security.
Okay, any other, yes, Jim?
I just want to make sure I, I understand. So a parent who wants to pick up a child will still enter and go north on Hartley Road all the way to Hale Middle School, loop around, and come back down and enter the staging area? Okay.
Take them home for the pickup.
And not to open a can of worms, but what does that do? Are the, are the pickup and drop-off times at Hale significantly different than at Center? Or does it cause a nightmare up at Hale, all that traffic looping around?
No, they're, they're about 35 minutes off from each other.
That, that seems kind of, kind of close to me, Mike.
That does sound like it's going to, no.
Right.
It's been working well, but I, I can tell you that parents definitely get there early. Like, there are, so drop-off at Center School is at 8:25, and people start lining up at 8:05, 8:07. So they, they, they definitely get there early, and then that was the, that was one of the issues when it was in the front, is that they would start lining up very early, and then you have different drop-offs for different parts of the school, for different ages. And then where that drop-off is, like, it used to be the, like, the preschool would get dropped off at the old band entrance, I guess, and then, so you'd have cars stopped there, and they couldn't make it the rest of the loop, so then cars did back up onto 117. So that was adding to the issues.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, and then at the other end of the day, I, I used to know this stuff, but it's been a few years. I don't know what the schedules are anymore. So the end of, end of day, I mean, I assume that the proms equal morning and afternoon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I tend to find that more people, we were finding more people would get picked up in the afternoon and then get dropped off.
Like, for activities that they may participate, where the parent has to pick them up, tends to be more people in the afternoon.
So the bus routes are very long. That's what it is. I mean, the kids who live all the way out and act in are, that's where their parents are picking them up, because they'll be in the bus for 45 minutes. Okay. I, I have another.
Yes, please.
Actual, so where you're, can you just walk me through what, what section of the road you're talking about widening? Where, where are we cutting into? Are we just creating a slip lane to go in? Like, what, what is this physically going to look like?
So you know the side that, against the septic tank?
Yep.
That, the big concrete wall?
Yep.
So we're, we're just going to be removing, I think, what was it, four feet from that, from the grass strip that's in front of that wall?
Great. The sidewalk on the other side's not going to be touched? Fantastic.
Nope.
Okay.
It's just that one side that goes up, up along the, the concrete wall, and then that's just going to be widened right there, that's it.
Yeah, and there'll be like a buffer off the wall a little bit. We, it won't be right up against the wall.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to visualize what it's supposed to look like.
Yeah.
Want to say a question?
Of course.
Chief Solisi, do you perceive this, moving forward, to still be a problem? You know, because obviously, I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit with what, you know, Ms. Birch Michael said with regards to this being a COVID issue or not, and, you know, thinking about whether this is going to reduce, like, you, you project that this is going to be continuing for years to come, and that this isn't, you know, going to revert back, that this is true. and that this isn't, you know, going to revert back, that this is truly something that we're gonna have to either solve today or, or next year or the year after, but no matter what, it's, it's, it's gonna need to be solved?
So we've been, we've been discussing this for a few years now. Um, so, and I haven't seen it gotten any better. And I can't, but, you know, I, I, if I could predict the future, I would agree. And, uh, but they, uh, and, and I don't know if parents are now gonna have, or bust their kids even more based on what's happening, uh, with the cost of fuel. And I, so I, I can't say if it's, if it's gonna be an increase. I can say that as of right now, that this is an issue. Uh, that would be easily resolved with just widening that. And again, it adds a lot more parking and can, and also it adds, um, like I said, if there was events up at Hale School, everyone right now parks going facing towards Hale School. And then when they get out, they have to drive all the way up and around and then there's the traffic backup. But this would alleviate and get people out of the area quicker. However, if it's, um, uh, you know, again, continuing on from this point, I don't, I, I can't tell what parents are gonna do. I know that this week alone, we did get complaints because, um, from parents, because people weren't taking advantage of the, the length of Hartley Road. Uh, they were trying to go back down to, uh, Library Hill Road. I don't know if that answers your question. As good as it could be.
Yeah, Megan.
I don't know. I, I have, I don't have an actual.
Pat, if you can stop sharing, I just wanted to share one picture from, from the original map.
Do you want me to share it?
Do you have it up?
Yeah, I have it ready.
Um, just to, because I'm still, I'm, I'm actually, Chief, when you were talking about the drop-off process, I also wonder, um, if there's a better way to use the loop. I mean, I guess, I, it's just, it's a little frustrating here. I mean, we actually, we took the stone building down because of this large parking lot, which was designed to get all the traffic off one seventeen. Now, you know, parent habits may have changed somewhat, but it does, it still feels to me that, that there should be a, a way that this works better. I mean, I hear what you're saying, that there's only so far they can go on the live, live parking circle. But, you know, I mean, I counted, it's, I mean, even, even with the limited live parking, I mean, if they use the parking lot, which has its own entrance and exit, so you wouldn't have to get into the same, I mean, yes, there's still the only one exit going off onto one seventeen, but I'm just concerned that, um, again, it's sort of in that big picture of, like, if this has really been exacerbated by COVID, are we spending a lot of money to change a road that we don't need to change? Um, so, um, I'm just, yeah, I get, that's.
Can I ask a question off of what you just said? I think is, is getting to where you're trying to get at.
Okay.
And that is, um, Chief, have you tried every which way in terms of be, behaviorally shifting people or shifting traffic patterns that you feel like is safe and that can be done? And you've sort of exhausted that avenue, is what I think Chair Sturgis is, is trying to get at. You know, have you, have you sort of done your diligence here and, and you feel like truly a structural change is necessary in light of having exhausted the behavioral changes that could have been done?
So we, yeah, we did work with the school to try to get, uh, you know, different avenues and different perspectives on how we can get the parents, uh, to get off of one seventeen. Now, that's really, that was our goal. We were seeing a lot of issues. We, we sent out emails, we worked, um, we sent out information. Uh, right on your screen there, it's where it says parent drop off, where that P is, that is like the last spot uh, of where they drop off. Like, that's, they, they don't go any further than that. So it's not that entire loop that you have available. It's, um, it's, it's actually half of that loop that's available.
And that's because of the fire, the fire lane can't be blocked, right?
Well, not only the fire lane can't be blocked, but then the staff, that's as far as the staff was going, uh, to that area.
That's what it says, parent drop off.
That's why I need to see that situation.
So, um, it, and to, to get the kids, because as soon as the kids get out of the, out of the, the cars, you have to have staff there. And there are also, uh, there are individuals that need their own individual staff members getting them out of the car. So that, that's a requirement on some of these, uh, students.
Yep.
So it's, it wasn't that whole entire loop that we were taking advantage of, uh, because we, the, the staffing wasn't there. So we had to come up with a, how can we safely have the rest of the motor in public, um, access our main road through, through that time? And there's a lot more real estate on the, where it says bus drop off now and then continuing on Hartley Road. And we can easily get cars in and, um, in and out of that. Now, if you look on, uh, on your, um, on your diagram there, so though, where it says, uh, parking spaces above Hartley Road to the left of that, those don't exist.
Right.
Yeah, right there, so those don't exist now.
Right.
There's nothing, that, that's all currently a, um, a, a berm next to, uh, a, um, a giant con, concrete wall, so those don't exist. Uh, staff are parking in the parking spaces where, uh, off of Hartley Road, but staff are also parking on Great Road too. So there's not, um, this, th- there, there aren't as many spaces as we think there are. But I understand what you're saying, that there's a separate entrance and exit for peo, parents to come and drop off. And it's usually the younger, really younger preschool age that I see going in and out of that parking lot.
Right.
Uh, and that's, and that's, that's not a quick turnaround either for that. That's, it takes a, it takes a while to get a little kid out of a car and then walk up and then wait for your teacher to come out.
Yeah.
So I'm very appreciative of that.
Yeah.
Um, so.
No, and that was, that was the intention of that front parking lot, was the idea that the younger kids were most likely, they were more likely to be getting the, the, um, what, the opposite of live parking. You know, the, the parents would want to walk them in, so they had more time. So there was plenty of, and the idea was that that was plenty of space for that, whatever percentage of the younger kids that would be getting driven, so.
So we, we did look at it, and actually, one of the, one of the, uh, ideas on the table, but we, we didn't go through with it, was actually to, to bring the parents up and then do the drop-off around the actual building and have them come out. So like, you go in and then you come all the way around the building, because you can drive around the whole building. Um, but we, uh, we, we decided that that wasn't gonna to work too well. Uh, too many moving parts on that line, that wasn't gonna be safe.
Right. Um, Ms. Ber, Ber.
I think you were first.
Um, Chief, can, because I've got one that rides the bus now. But what has happened is the, the two lots have swapped, correct? The bus drop-off is now at the front of the school.
Right.
And the parent pickup is at the back of the school. Okay.
Yes.
So all, all of that happened to alleviate the traffic off of one seventeen, yes?
Yes.
So we've solved that problem by swapping them.
Yes.
Great. Just wanted to rewrap my head around that one.
Okay.
So we, all the discussion that we're having around.
That conversation again was pre, pre-pandemic.
Right. I think it just all happened at the, around the same time, I think. And, and that might be why I'm getting them confused.
Yes, Mr. Selby?
I'm glad we're having this discussion, but not hearing a lot of good reason to second guess the joint staff recommendation. It, the, it's, it's disappointing that the big circle on one seventeen has not been used for the way it's intended. It sounds like it's a combination of, uh, parent behavior isn't cooperating and, um, some staffing inadequacies for not being all the way around the circle, but not really anyone's fault. It just is reality. It sounds like at some point, somebody had to pick where to have a traffic jam and they picked Hartley Road. And I can't really second guess that. And.
I, I'll, I'll be, I'll be honest, Jim, that was, that was my, uh,
Yeah.
my decision on that one. I, I, I wanted the cars off of one seventeen, I'll alleviate that, that's an issue and that's possible safety hazard, so.
I can't second guess that. So now, and the, um, the questions about, well, is it temporary? Given that the chief said it exists pre-COVID, I know I've seen it pre-COVID. I'm not sure what the basis is to think that normal is not traffic jam.
Right.
Maybe smaller than right now, but still traffic jam. And the thing that's really got me is of the, the proposed solution is pretty low impact. It, it gets the road closer to a giant retaining wall and a septic mound. Fine.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't eat up a sidewalk. Um, it, it does not sound like that side is used for biker pedestrian access. I'm not really seeing a reason to second guess it at this point.
No.
As long as you, then, the plan is not to flip-flop them back, and that's what I'm hearing, then, right?
My recommendation is not to flip them back.
Would not be, not to flip them back, okay. Yep.
I, I can't, I can't say what the school administration will do.
Right, but, but that's your recommendation.
No, um, yeah, my recommendation is, is that this is, we're, this is working in a safer, safer way. And we, we try to really help out too, for any sort of traffic, buses coming out. Uh, even when parents were coming out, uh, we would try to, you know, we, if we can have an officer who's not tied up on a, on a call, but trying to get them in the intersections, no matter if it was Great Road or one seventeen, in front of the school or up at Hartley or wherever it is, um, try to help alleviate that, those issues too. Um, so, but this is, we need something that is without our presence, that needs to work, without our presence there.
Okay.
Right, and, and I might say too, as, as that is our goal across the district, um, you know, in the other two towns, we've run into similar situations and had to reroute some of the pickup lines. So, um, and not to, not to my knowledge of having to, um, reconstruct the road and create this, um, this lane, but it, it is first and foremost the safety of the children that we look at. And I, it's no intention to flip-flop this unless it's highly recommended by the police department or there's a major safety issue on that road.
Okay. Well, I just.
Another, another advantage, just, just to put it out there, is as I was stating before, the whole, um, some parents, uh, need extra time and, uh, or the student needs extra time. So if they take an extra two minutes or one minute, which is a long time for traffic to stop behind you, that backup is not hitting one seventeen. It, it's just going on a road that's, has no, has, has other school traffic on it, not a major ro, roadway.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a motion-related question, Denise, it's really for you, and that is, um, what is the amount that is being requested for this?
Well, I'm gonna, right now. Forty-two thousand on this one.
Forty-two, yeah.
Last week, is that still the same?
Yes, the amount is.
Still forty-two?
Yeah, and actually, um, I spoke with, um, Steve and he, uh, plans to reach out to the school if he has not. Uh, but the highway department may be able to do some of this work and, um, have that amount come in even less.
Great. So, um, if there's no other questions or comments, I will take a motion.
I move to approve forty-two thousand dollars of ARPA funding for the NRSD Hartley Road widening project as presented at this meeting.
So.
Can we do a minor up to forty-two thousand with the idea that it might be less than that? I mean, I, I guess, is that, do we need to say that? Because all of them are, were estimates on, on ARPA, since it's not town meeting, it's flexible. So, my apologies, never mind.
No, no, we're good, we're good.
No need to change it, right?
I was happy with either.
That's right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three, all opposed, that's me, so, uh, roll call. Uh, Mr. Selby?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Ms. Bertrand Michael?
Aye.
Ms. Sturgis, about to note, but it passes three to one. Thanks, Ms. Maroni, for coming. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
No, so Pat, on Thursday night, um, you won't need to go in-depth with this project with Capitol, um, because they are not weighing in, but they'll want to discuss the other project and your five-year plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I'm really excited for our next item, which is, uh, Chief Benoit and Captain Evers are gonna be talking about the cistern project, which I got to hear all about, I don't know, it was ten days ago or so. Um, and I was so impressed, um, and there was so much to learn, that I thought it was great to have them come to the select board meeting, um, to, for the rest of the board, but also for the public to understand just how much is going on behind the scenes to, uh, keep Stowe safe from fire. So, um, I am, I thank you both for joining us again tonight. And, um, I know, uh, Captain Evers said he could talk about this all day long. I'm not gonna ask you to do that, but I expect you have a presentation and, um, and then we'll have questions. Chief, you wanna kick us off?
Yeah, I'll kick this off. Uh, it's much easier to start off first and trying to follow the footprints of the, uh, our guest speakers at the last meeting, but, this project has been going on for, uh, over a decade now. It started back with Deputy Bosse Lee with the first introduction of a cistern on Heritage Lane. Um, since then, uh, we've been working with developers, we've been working with planning board to install cisterns throughout the town. Uh, these are static water sources that give us a dependable location for fire suppression. We have found, uh, today we have twenty-seven cisterns installed around the outskirts of towns. All the new developments since seventy, excuse me, since ninety-eight have had cisterns installed. Uh, depending on the size of the development, uh, the number of houses, uh, sometimes require more than one cistern for fire suppression. Uh, so this project has been going on for a long time. Uh, we have found that the cisterns installed are very easy to maintain. Um, they allow for firefighter safety, since we don't have to go onto ice or into the water. Um, and in the last twenty-two plus years, we've only had one cistern, uh, two, the two cisterns fail to, due to a leak, but they were easily repaired. Uh, and, uh, so we, this project came about about a year ago with, uh, the former Chief Landry. Uh, he had heard about the ARPA funds and the possibility of infrastructure redesign and had brought this to, uh, the town administrator. And, uh, we're very excited that it was supported by the state, by Representative Kate Hogan, uh, to push forward the three hundred thousand dollars for this year, for us to be able to, uh, install up to six cisterns and keep pride to the town. So with that, I'll let Captain Evers go forward.
So out of the twelve proposed locations, uh, that I pinpointed around town, uh, we're gonna start focusing on six first. And those are the ones that we've identified as critical areas where there's no fire, uh, no water for fire suppression, no water dedicated for fire suppression. Um, the first one that we have is up on, on, up on Corner Drive, up in Harvard Acres area. And as I indicated before, um, Harvard Acres area used to have a dedicated water supply. All the houses had, um, not a municipal water, but there was a private water system there. And about ten years ago, that all got removed. Everybody who lived there had to drill wells and all the fire had to be taken out. And that left us there with over two hundred addresses with almost no, no, no fire suppression water at all. Uh, so that's, that's one of the big ones. The next one moving forward, um, was the Taylor Road area, which connects to Harvard Acres, I understand, but it's, it's pretty close to it. Um, we thought that a really good place to have one would be right in the parking lot to get into the conservation land. It's centrally located, there's quite a few addresses on that road. That cistern there would help protect a lot of, uh, property on that road also. Um, I'm sorry, my, this went out. I also have the proposal, uh, to put three right in the center of town. One of them's at three eighty Great Road, and the other one would be either, um, the old fire station sixteen Crescent Street or on Common Road or both. Just due to the size of the buildings that we have in town, of the, the larger population density, um, there's some very large, very historical buildings in there, uh, that cause us great concern. And, uh, not having enough water in there is something that we really think about all the time. All of these cisterns that Chief Benoit was discussing, they are really on the outer edges of town. As neighborhoods in development, developments went in, we were able to put these cisterns in, but they are really not in, close to the central location of the town. Um, with the exception of maybe one on Meeting House Lane. Uh, but that, that building was put in about twenty years ago. And then the last one that we have is, and this is a really important one to us also, is right on the fire station property, five eleven Great Road. At the end of our driveway there would, all the homes and businesses right on one seventeen, they would benefit from that also. Uh, but one of the big, um, advantages of putting one there is I would have that one specially designed where we'd be able to use it as a training facility, um, for the firefighters. Having our firefighters be able to, uh, utilize the cisterns effectively is one of the key things to it. If we add more cisterns in it, we need to be trained on how to do it, obviously. If we add more cisterns in it, we need to be trained on how to do it, obviously. So that one's a really important one to us also. So out of, out of those, those are the first six that we'd be focusing on right now.
Um, do you happen to have, I, I think we have the slides, some of the slides that you showed, um, at the presentation, particularly, cause I think people might not know what they're looking at when they see the, the red nozzles, for lack of a better word. Um, do you, Denise, do you have the, I have it up if, if you wanna give me, um.
You should be able to show your screen, um, or I can pull it up either way.
Let me see if I can. Just cause I think, um, to me, this is also one of the eye openers, like, oh, that's what it is. Let's see. Well, this is one in, in construction, but these red hooks, right?
That's right, yep.
I don't know if you.
So there's that one that's a hook, it looks like a candy cane, there's two of them there.
Yeah.
Those are, uh, vent pipes and one of them's a fill pipe that we would use just to fill the tank.
So one's a fill, okay.
The one, the large red one that's horizontal, that's the key one. That one we actually use to suck water out of the tank using the fire apparatus. So that would be, um, where that, where that, we call that the head, where that head is located is very critical to us.
Right.
And that's the part where we can't have parking around it. If that's blocked, it renders it completely useless.
And, so, and then this one, I'm sorry, it's a little smaller than it probably should be, but, so this is all that we see though, is that right?
It is, yep. That's correct.
But you can access the.
If you're wondering where these two are, um, the one on the left, that's Kettle Plain Road down off of, uh, Maple Street, and, uh, the one on the right is, um, Cortland Drive, which is in the villages of Stowe, right off of Gray Road. Um, those are two examples of just how, uh, non-invasive this is when the project's complete, you, you can't really tell that they're there.
Right.
And I think that's a big advantage to this.
And you said, how many are there in town now? Uh, J.
Currently, right now, it's twenty-seven.
There's twenty-seven.
Which does, which sounds like a lot, but when we really need these, they're, they are, they're.
It's a long way away.
They're, they're, they're out of our reach, so.
Right. And then you, you do have the, the plan for at least six more, right? If, if funding comes and Kate Hogan's gonna try to get us more funding, she promises. I mean, who knows, right?
That's right. That's right. Um, I've just discussed the first six with you and I have an additional six also.
Great. Um, any questions? I mean, I just, I found this really interesting as, you know, uh, when you buy a house in Stowe and you've lived in the city your whole life and you find out that, you know, the insurance company asks about, uh, where's the closest hydrants? And I'm like, uh, there's no hydrant, you know? I live right on the town line to Acton, so I actually can see a hydrant in Acton. I don't know what the rules are about using another town's hydrant, but I knew that we didn't have it on our side until the development went in across the street, and now we have one, which I found out because I saw this. It's like, that's what that is. So it made me feel much better.
And for the record, we, we would use that Acton hydrant and.
You, you can't.
Thank for forgiving.
I, I would hope they would, right? You, you're, the, the, uh, the teamwork of fire departments across town seems to be pretty clear, so, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Salvi?
I do have a question, but I think first I wanted to just say, uh, picking up on that, I have a friend who's the son of a firefighter in Lawrence, and when he came to visit me in town, I had to take him to go see a couple of fire ponds because he had heard of these things, but he, he could not imagine how they worked.
Yeah.
So my question, I think I had a misunderstanding. So when you, if you used the water in one of these cisterns, how do you recharge it? You actively fill it through one of the stand pipes?
That's correct. Uh, that's correct, yep. That's one way to do it. Or another way is they're, um, very often equipped with manhole covers on the top, and it would be just as simple as us just dropping a fire hose down there and filling it up.
So it does not recharge by groundwater, which for some reason I thought.
That's.
No.
I know why you thought that.
Every cistern, um, had a meter, and then we ran into complications of who's gonna pay for electricity, who's gonna pay for the upkeep. Uh, we found after that it was much easier for us just to maintain them, um, by filling them ourselves with our tanker. Uh, it also provides enough to, for members to practice, uh, with trucks, so.
Well, and I also think, cause this was gonna be my question, was just the same factors that make the rivers, lakes and ponds unreliable ultimately can make groundwater unreliable. So.
Yeah.
If, if you're actively filling them, that makes a lot more sense. Um, my only other question is repairs. That sounds like a downside, is that you'd have to tear up a parking lot, um, if you had evidence of a leak.
So, uh, it was on, it was on Cranberry Circle. We found that the tank was leaking. Um, with a company that we've contracted with, they came down, they were able to go inside the tank, um, recote the inside of the tank, and we filled the backup with water, and that's been holding for at least ten years.
So do they mostly have service manholes?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
That's one of the requirements, that they do have manholes. In case, uh, the red pipe breaks and we can't get water up it, we can open the manhole as a secondary to draft the water out of it.
Okay, thank you.
You learned something new.
I, I certainly did.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't know about the recharging. I, I actually was assuming it was somehow gradually recharging from the groundwater. Well, and it came up around, because of the, our fire ponds, right? That between climate change and impact on growth and stuff in the ponds, they're not as reliable as they used to be, cause they're all growing in or, or there's just not as, you can't be, depending on the droughts and whatever, so.
That is correct. The, the cisterns allow this to happen regardless of any, any weather conditions, any drought conditions, the temperature, it's impervious to all of it. It's just thirty thousand gallons of water right there, dedicated for fire suppression, and it's ready to go twenty-four seven.
Awesome. Well, thank you, guys. I really appreciate you, um, taking the time to explain it to more people, and, um, it's just more of great work. So appreciate everything you all and the fire department do for us.
Thank you.
Denise?
I just wanted to ask the chief, could you just take us briefly through the timeline now? So when funding comes through, when do you estimate having these installed?
So we are, um, we will be working with all the profit heads, uh, we'll start meeting to look at different locations, uh, making sure that the authority having jurisdiction has, uh, input, uh, especially on conservation or on town prop, uh, different locations. Uh, once that is done, we will have, uh, Captain Evers will be working with, planning on writing in a RFP, uh, to get that out to a contractor. We anticipate that we will have the first, um, cistern started towards the end of May, beginning of June. Uh, the entire process will take approximately a year, uh, depending on the manufacturer of the tanks. Um, the one contractor, one tank contractor that we've been using for supplies and information, it takes roughly about four to six weeks for them to construct the tanks. So that's gonna be the time factor there. Um, so as far as, as I said, the timeline and we wanna get this going, um, digging holes would be the end of May, beginning of June.
Great. And we don't have a vote, that's just, um, state money, that we don't, we're not voting on it.
No, correct.
Well, thank you again, Chief. Appreciate it very much.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, and thanks, Captain, also. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
So our next item is a diversity discussion, and this was, uh, we had talked about it in February and, um, said we wanted to bring it back for next steps, but I wasn't clear on what our next steps were, so I'm just bringing it up to the board.
Um, I will weigh in. So, uh, so, um, I think when I had said I wanted to come back to it, it was to allow for Zach to be able to weigh in, because he was not present for two of our conversations because he left.
Oh, when we were.
Because of the vaccine discussion. So it wasn't that I had anything else to add, I felt like we kinda landed in a good place the last time we talked, but I did wanna make sure that Zach was not left out of that conversation.
Great.
Um, so that's why.
Great. Thank you. So, Mr. Burns? Sorry, not to put you on the spot. Sorry, Zach.
No, that was, and, and we had a really good discussion. Last time I was, you know, very happy, you know, obviously our comment today and, and watching, you know, frankly, the, the staff diversity group, you know, voicing up on, on issues, I, I find this to be really exciting. I know, um, folks in town, at least that I've been engaging with, are, are very excited. They especially love the, the hyper local focus. So obviously, the International Women's, like the book you just, you showed, the, um, obviously our golf course, you know, those, those really hit, you know, realizing that the history is right here and, and being shaped. Um, and that's, you know, I, I think for, for that end, you know, we, we hit the conversation last time. Um, if the question is, how do we wanna pivot, you know, to think about more, you know, diversity more broadly, um, I think we could have that, but I defer to you. Um, but I appreciate Ms. Burt, Dr. Michael, remembering that I had stepped out for the vaccine, uh, conversation, um, and was happy that we had that conversation last time.
Great. Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we just keep it, you know, if there's things that come up, I mean, as we said, you know, if there's requests from residents to recognize a certain month or issue that's coming up, that we hope they'll bring that to us and, and if any of you have similar, you know, I think that's, that's where we're at now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Mr. Salvi?
No.
Great. Okay. Well, then, um, if not we go to minutes of being, um, where we are in our meeting. Oh, yes.
I had one comment on the second page, cause I was like, what is this weird number? And then I realized that our Capitol requests really are up one thousand five hundred and forty-eight percent.
We're hoping that wasn't true. That was my only.
Okay. Note, and then I read it again.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, any other comments on the minutes? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
I will be abstaining, so I ask maybe.
Yeah, I move to accept the minutes of the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two meeting as drafted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention.
Abstention, so, um, I guess I should do a roll call, just to be clear. Mr. Salvi?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Burns?
Abstain.
Ms. Sturgis says yes.
Aye.
Burt, Dr. Michael. Okay, so three and one abstention. And with that, uh, correspondence, any questions, comments? No. Um, let me look, let me, oh, did I have it? I don't even have it open. I don't think I had anything. Um, I did have an email, which that's, I went on to check. Um, I had asked Planning Board, we had left with Planning Board to have a follow-up conversation. Um, partly they had a hearing tonight, so we couldn't do it tonight. And then, um, Jesse had sent me sort of their update on their work on the master plan, and I was going to email it to Joyce to make sure it got into correspondence, and I don't think it did. No, it did not. So I will forward that for the next meeting, so you just, it was more of an update. I don't think that we have any, um, action. We'll, we'll figure out with them when we can actually meet again.
Great.
But that was the only thing, so. If there's nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It would be unanimous, all right. Sorry, Courtney, interplay. What can I say? We couldn't do it without you. Have a good weekend.